So I had to open some windows. We have trouble with the A C. So sorry about the noise.
Indiana Township Board of Supervisors, uh, Board of Supervisors meeting for May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five is called to order. The pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with a green justice for all. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you all again, live. So the first item tonight will be the approval of the minutes for the equal ninth twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, a second by Supervisor Khan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is the citizens.
Take a moment, personal preference, please.
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
I have something that I'd like to present to you if you stand. I have here a certificate from Crowley. It's the Supervisor Hall of Fame down in Crowley, Indiana Township Allegheny County, and it's given to Pennsylvania State Association of Towns Supervisors hereby recognizes your twenty years of dedicated service as a supervisor at Indiana Township and its residents. We commend you on your selflessness, the lasting contributions, contributions and your community. I'd like to present out that.
Thank you.
Hall of Famer.
Yeah, it's a.
In the Hall of Fame, there's a letter. This is the.
That's a copy of the issue.
Okay, well, thank you. When is the bronze boss? Yeah, I am, I am getting old. Yeah, believe me. I just want to say thank you. Couldn't, it's, it's, it's nice to be recognized, but it has always been my pleasure, my honor to work with everybody up here for, regardless if you've been on the board for four years, eight years, or, or twenty plus like me, it's an honor to be here. And, um, and we'll just go from there. All right. I love serving in Indianapolis. Okay. Fair enough. Can, should we move on? You bet. Thank you all. I appreciate it very much so. Very much so. Okay. All right. So the next item up would be the citizens forum, and we do not have anybody that has signed up for this evening. So we will move on to the development proposals.
Uh, before you go into that, I just want everyone to know I'm going to recuse myself from any discussions or vote on this matter because it's my property.
Okay. All right. So, uh, the Khan's plan of lots. Dan, Dan.
This evening, we have the developers engineer Mark Schmidt in the audience. And Mark, if you'd just like to stand up there at the podium and give the supervisors a quick um overview of what this project was about.
Yeah, property is located on Indianola Road. It's basically three existing lots. The, the middle one is vacant, uh, and the smaller, uh, basically the plan is a lot line division plan taking some property and adding it to the middle lot and providing some easements for some existing groundways and things to give the property. That's about it.
And I would just like to add is that we did have the opportunity to review this plan. It was submitted on April eighth. Uh, it did go before the planning commission. Uh, at their last planning commission meeting, which was held on April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, and as Mark indicated, there were some minor items that needed to be added to the plan at this particular point. Uh, those items have now been added, and our recommendation or the recommendation of the planning commission would be to approve the Khan subdivision plan.
Any questions, Mr. Schmidt?
Straight forward.
All right. It's the board's pleasure.
Motion approved, the subdivision. Second up motion.
We have a, a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, a second by Supervisor Newman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes four to zero unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Who was one of them?
For Supervisor Khan. Okay, um, motion to pay the bills.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills. Second up motion.
Supervisor Khan with the motion, Supervisor Newman with the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Um, all business, Dan, nothing?
We have nothing, Mayor.
Nothing at all? Okay. Uh, we'll move on to reports. Volunteer power companies.
Yeah, the, uh, the Tuesday of storms, uh, we had like seventeen official occurrences, but we had so many multiple dispatches for the same three done, wired down.
Seventeen calls.
The three companies combined, but that was, yeah, but we kept getting calls for the same thing. And the next association meeting will be June fourth, Royal Ridge, seven, seven thirty.
Anything else, Ed?
That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Emergency medical, nobody here. All good to go. Okay. We'll move on. The chief is not present. Chief of Police is not present tonight. We'll move on to code enforcement.
Further, Mayor.
Further. While it works, Larry is here. Hi, Larry. Nothing to add from Larry? Okay, we'll move on to the engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody has a copy of my engineer's report this evening in, um, Mother's Day pink, I would call it. Uh, so let's, uh, we've already handled all the development proposals, which is kind of surprising because it's kind of a light load. Um, no offense. Uh, but, uh, I think it was a refreshing pause after the, seems like the, the year we've had. So hopping down to development activity on the courtyard at Hidden Falls subdivision, Larry, Jeff and I met with the developer on April the sixth regarding some uh punch list items on the roadway. Uh, fortunately, the, uh, we had the developer hold back about nineteen thousand dollars. And again, they're, they're not major issues at all. It's just like seal here, um, you know, that kind of thing. But we wanted to get as, I almost said, I almost said, I wanted to get as much money as I could on the developer, but that would be a mistake, I think, a little bit. Um, so, um, there's still some items that needs to be done relative to the detention facilities. Uh, I know John is walking and working with the, uh, the path between Fox Chapel and, and, and I can tell you that my history working with Fox Chapel, and I know, uh, your manager will attest to the same thing, um, it is not an easy path.
Very thorough.
And I would, then, bring you to say that's probably what you're gonna say later on.
All right. There's much more of an update than that, so.
Um, so, but anyways, it's a wonderful plan. If you ever had a chance to have been out there. On the Harwood Meadows P R D.
Any estimate of time for when it'll be done now?
My guess is that, uh, by September latest will be October, you're gonna be approving the public infrastructure. Uh, it'll be definitely before the snow flies. But, um, right now, you're still holding back, I'm gonna say, an easy half million dollars worth of incentive for them to do it. On the Harwood Meadows, P R D phase four, uh, that project again is coming along quite nicely. They're laying the sidewalk at a more active rate, which is usually a telltale that they're gonna be closing that project out soon. And I have the, there's eighty-three percent of building permits issued. And Jeff, I, I would bet you that it's probably more like ninety-three at this point.
Yeah, it's probably closer to ninety.
Um, so again, again, they're, they're pushing rather fast. And again, you hold five hundred ninety-three thousand four hundred dollars, uh, in order of credit to hold that. As a result.
Before we move on, Passell, you mentioned Chris, but Steve, uh, I know the police are gonna be spending more time up there. Is it getting better from your perspective?
Well, we put all those speed ups in, Chris.
Well.
Um, it's hard, it's hard to tell. Um, the construction traffic does seem to still be going through quickly at times. Uh, the police department, so, uh, should question. You did put up an electronic sign down at the bottom of Lenox. Uh, I'd be interested in hearing what they, it acquires data as it's there. So you can also see what their observations were.
So there was one up there?
Yeah, it's actually at the bottom of the hill.
Okay, but it was there?
Yes, as I, as you come into like the construction region is where the, the sign was pointing up hill.
Okay.
Yeah, it was on Lenox near Westchester at the bottom, second house. But the, the, there's concrete trucks. They seem to slow down because they relayed their message the next day. They told us to slow the trucks down. And also, the other complaint was starting before seven. So.
Yeah, I continue to hear complaints periodically about that. I, I personally don't see as much of that. Um, I think the biggest complaint on the before seven thing are the gravel trucks and the sand trucks and so on coming in and making deliveries before anyone actually else, anyone else is there working. Um, they come in on Lenox, and I know people in Lenox are complaining about that. But that's, that would be hard to catch them, right? Because if the truck comes in, they're only there for, you know, five or ten minutes and they're gone.
Unless we get, any chance to talk with the chief and see if they're getting some tools up there on sale?
Yeah, I've had some complaints in this district and first of all, so. Relating to some message, because we talked about this before, Chris brought up detention, Chief Lucius says he's working on it. So it would be good to just touch base and figure out what we found out.
Yeah, they, they do work way past the end time too, but we don't have so many complaints from the, you know, the citizens.
Well, working past the end time, it is okay. If this is related to heavy equipment.
Okay, yeah. So heavy equipment, those guys are pretty much done. Every now and then, the foundation company will still be loading stuff with a crane. Um, what I do see is like this, there a day we take, you know, as you, almost the crowd, you were taking a walk, and at like seven thirty at night, the siding crew shows up to start working.
Okay, well, that's fine. Heavy equipment, you can do that.
Yeah, the excavator, Andy's excavator is fantastic, right? So he's, doesn't start too soon.
Right.
Cleans up the street. Great things to say about him. Foundation company with the heavy concrete trucks, they're usually okay.
Well, I'll, I'll put another bug in his ear. Chad, if you want to show.
Thank you. Sorry, Dan.
That's okay. So moving along to the Harwood Meadows P R D. Because that particular development, uh, basically sold out at the pace that it did, the developer has approached us regarding moving ahead with phase five, uh, which was part of the original approval by the supervisors, just to jog your memory a little bit. Uh, the, working with Erbs group, uh, the developers agreement has now been prepared, and I believe it's gonna be emailed to them tomorrow. Um, and we're working on some of the details. As part of our new protocol, uh, in a developers agreement, uh, your manager, Jeff, myself, uh, had a utility meeting calling that. So all the utilities come in, we rearrange your, your, your chairs for you. Uh, we sit down and make sure that everybody has their own slide, uh, and that we don't have any, you know, cross fighting and things of that nature. Uh, so that was one of the new changes to the developers agreement, as well as, um, in order to preclude any future road openings, there, everybody is required to put a sleep in or put it in ahead of time. So, um, we're trying to, I guess, learn a little bit, uh, to make sure that, uh, it runs smoother. So that's where that is. Foxwood Trails, nothing to report. Blue Run Road, if you've gone down Route nine-ten, you can see where all the trees are being taken out, uh, is for that particular development. Uh, there is a, a wonderful, uh, stone, um, pad there to make sure that all the dirt stays in the development. So that was moving along quite nicely. Uh, on the, uh, the Frederick Farms, of course, that was approved at your last meeting, and I'll be working with Erbs group on getting together that particular developers agreement. And for the audience, this information that's located down, uh, next to, uh, the dive bar is maybe the best, uh, landmark that I can give you. Uh, Indian Trails.
Manor, I'd say.
The Manor, yes.
Yes.
Our Harwood State Center reference.
Are there plans?
Behind Wolfendale's.
To break ground this summer?
Yes. I would imagine this one's gonna be fast tracked very rapidly. Um, so, uh, that's why Erbs group and myself, we're getting geared up here to, you know, get ahead of the curve a little bit here.
Indian.
Uh, sorry. That is, that's also the, going to be, um, the homes being, the builder will do Miranda at Frederick Farms?
I don't think so.
Yes, it is.
It will be?
Okay.
And is there a builder that's been chosen for the Blue Run?
That's the one that's gonna be different.
There has been, but I don't remember the name offhand.
Yeah, we just, it wasn't a resolu-, the approval that we just did last month.
It's not Brian, it's not Miranda.
Not Brian, it's not Miranda. It's another big one. I just don't remember the names.
So we're kind of looking forward to seeing what they're gonna drive. Uh, Indiana, Indiana Trails, um, that one's, uh, still, uh, in the next, but nothing moving there because of litigation. Uh, Harmony at Heart Runs, uh, of course, Jeff is, is spearheading, uh, working with those folks.
We're in the civil complaint phase of that project. Just to let you know. Civil complaint.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know. There's a whole lot of, um, okay, thank you.
But I wanted to stop at this moment and just, there's a lot of activity with developments. But I wanted to thank Larry and his group because as he goes around and looks at all the different, uh, cash bases and things that Larry does and grabs, he informs me as to what a contractor might be sneaking, doing sidewalks. And also, I want to thank Chris too for doing the same. So your next position is Blue Run. That's where you need to start building.
It's a long walk.
So flipping over on Forest View Plan, uh, as we talked a little bit with Sarah, uh, this is a plan that was started probably back in nineteen eighteen-ish. Um, and, uh, as we conclude the development of that, we're getting some of the final punch list items taken care of on that. On the miscellaneous projects, again, I've, I've been remiss in meeting with, uh, Dan and Larry on Ottawa Hills. The M S four, I just saw in the Pennsylvania bulletin where your, uh, report or in your report has now been approved by the state. Uh, so they, they like what you guys do. The zoning ordinance, of course, is gonna be next month. Salt Shed, uh, Larry and I met and did a final punch list item on that, and that's why you don't see them on the agenda this evening because they've got a longer list of things to do. I'll be working with Matt, or Jesus, um, Jeff and, uh, Jackie on finally, finalizing that zoning map there. On the People's Natural Gas, um, as, as, um, the gas company now is required by state law to increase the pressure of their pipes from, uh, five P S I now to forty P S I. Everybody is, is, is changing and putting in new, that yellow pipeline that everybody sees. Of course, that'll affect the, the fire company too, when those things let loose.
Yeah.
You know what's about to happen. But, but we're seeing more and more activity from People's Natural Gas. As a result of that, uh, Jeff, Jackie and myself have kind of implemented it, and Larry, I'm sorry, implemented a new road, road opening procedure, uh, to kind of make sure that, because they're going right down our roads. That's all they're doing. But they're.
Right along the front of our park too.
But they're, but they're gonna be making, yes, that's the next one. So they're, they're, I don't want to say we're making the pay the price, but we're making sure that they put our facilities back. And part of that is, is Larry and I worked with the, at the two thousand twenty-five, uh, paving project. You'll see that there's certain line items in there that we, we were working with People's Natural Gas just to do it ourselves. And that way, we have control of it. We know it's done properly, and they're just gonna cut the, the pressure check. Um, so in your two thousand twenty-five paving project, which we're gonna get to in a minute, I'm gonna say close to twenty-five thousand is probably reimbursable for People's Natural Gas. Saves that money, keeps it under control, and I think it's better for the council to hold. And as Dan just mentioned, the, the latest one to come in is they want to put a two-inch gas line, uh, right in front of the Emily Park parking lot from the bridge down to.
The pedestrian.
Yes. So that's where all that is. On the Emily Park.
And that's under the street there?
It's gonna be, uh, outside the road at that particular location. They are gonna be requesting a right of way to be prepared by the township. And, and again, I asked them whether they want Erbs group to prepare that right of way, or, uh, if they're gonna prepare it or whatever. So we're working on that. On the, uh, Emily Park ADA access project, of course, your manager got you twenty thousand dollars for the next phase of the sidewalk. And we started the design on that, and now it'll be constructed this year. On the Township Community Center Roof Replacement Project, uh, later on the agenda, we will request a motion to, uh, it's eleven B, I guess, take care of that at that time. The two thousand twenty-five paving project, all the contract documents have been prepared. Um, construction pending, that'll be with Shields Paving, which is a great contractor. Not as great as Shields, but good. Uh, same with the two thousand twenty-five shot chip project and the guide rail project. Uh, Larry and I need to meet a little bit and fine tune a couple of those items, uh, which we'll probably be doing here probably in the next two weeks. And then finally, the Brozick Center, uh, we're working on the roof replacement project on that.
Can you follow with Rose and the shot chip? Marshall Hill, Isley. It's gonna be a lower cedar. Lower cedar. Park cedar, rise page. Okay. Just need to avoid, please still avoid for a while this summer.
So we've notified, uh, is it, uh, satellite roof or windshield replacement?
Yeah.
And the Brozick Community Center, that's currently a slate roof, correct?
No, it's a membrane roof.
Oh, okay. And was it going to be?
All membrane. But I think what, what Dan, your manager and I have been talking about with Larry is doing some creative things with the heaves. And that's why it's not that bad. Trying to spruce it up a little bit. That's my report, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Dan. All right. We'll keep moving. Listen to her.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have a report this evening.
Manager, Dan?
Uh, I would mention a few things for the parks. Uh, so far, at this time, we've hit fifty-four pavilion rentals confirmed for, confirmed for the upcoming summer. And I also want to mention the annual touch a truck event is the third one. It's gonna be Saturday, May seventeenth, at Emily Community Park. Are gonna have the police, public works, fire trucks and more there. Uh, so it's a great event for the kids. And, uh, also wanted to mention the E M S station. I mentioned last month, it's nearing completion. So if anybody after the meeting would like to see where we are, I'd be happy to show you the facility. It's looking pretty good. And I should take the time to thank both the chief and Jeff Carroll. They've really helped a lot coordinating the, the different contractors for the work, whether it was the plumber for the roughens or the, uh, the gentleman that did the framing and the drywall, uh, and the H V A C, the electrical, all separately. And they've handled coordinating most all of that for them. So I very appreciate. So that's all I have here.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Uh, Park and Rex Community Services, nobody here from there? Historical, nobody here as well? We'll move on to the supervisors. District one?
Nothing for District one yet.
District two?
Um, I'd just like to compliment our emergency services, our police and so forth for the responses during the storm. I know that a lot of our citizens have had significant inconvenience because of, you know, power being off and so forth. But it was a Herculean effort by a lot of the electric companies to get it quick, as, done as quickly as possible. I know some don't have it yet or are waiting for it, but, uh, for the most part, uh, it was a great job that everybody did. We certainly appreciate it. And also, I did attend the, um, P S A's conference, attended some courses on some of the things that are of interest to us. A good, uh, educational conference this time. So I just wanted to let you know I was there.
That's it. Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Al. Uh, District four?
Uh, nothing to report.
District five?
Just wanna echo what Al said. We've got, well, pretty good down there on opposite side of Indianola, but on our side, District one, a lot of places, mine, Echo Woods, nine days, people had it pretty rough. And it was important to get the word out to let people know how public works, words, how the emergency management works here and the fact that we're at the mercy of two dang light before we can clear the road, they have to take care of the electrical issues. So got that word out. And in case anybody here or anybody listening, we do kind of need to plan in the long term how to deal with this and become more resilient. So I took note. Um, our state representative, Manny, Manny Steele, has a hearing on Wednesday, the twenty-first, at Oriam West, six-thirty. So if anybody wants to go tell their story, that's available. And our congressman, Chris Toulouse, you can go to his website. He has a survey that takes in information because we want to have something that can maybe get power back within a week for everybody. So that takes coordination at all levels, not just us here, state, county, federal. So let them know because that gives us the resources to make the changes at the local level. That's all I have. Once again, I'm at the mercy of Fox Chapel. Move that crosswalk forward. So who knows? Maybe in June.
All right. Thank, thank you, John. All right. For District three, uh, just a, just a couple of quick callouts as well. Uh, first and foremost, uh, I too attended the P S A's conference, uh, with, uh, two of my co-supervisors. And, and it's great. It's very educational. It's certainly eye-opening. You have townships from across the state of Pennsylvania in one room, representatives that, it's interesting. You go to these breakout sessions that they have, and there's so many groups, townships, counselors, supervisors, whatever you want to call them, talking about the how-tos. And, and so again, very proud of, of this board. They're talking about how to do a salto. We've just updated ours. We're, we're doing these things. And they talk about, uh, comprehensive plan, how to get one going, how to get one started, how to maintain it. We're in the process. We still updated and completed that as well. And we're real ahead of the game financially, which is great. You're, you hear a lot of these townships that are in dire straits, uh, can't find the next penny. We're, we're, Indiana's sitting, um, in, in a million dollars in infrastructure improvements. So, uh, we're, we're, we're doing our best. Um, and I always want to tell those successes, we've got our challenges, as we all know, um, especially those that, that come here and listen to us. There, there's always lots to do, but, um, you know, we leave these conferences, we go to learn something, and, and typically we do, and, and it makes us appreciate Indiana Township. So that much is there. Uh, just lastly, I'll end up, I do my quarterly town halls at my home. Um, I had a few constituents that typically stop by to talk about some of the ongoings in Royal Ridge. Uh, we've got, you know, we, we talk about housing plans and speeding. We talk about, you know, we, we found out that there may be some homeless people living, uh, in and around the neighborhood. So you learn things when you're talking to your constituents, which I think we all do on a regular basis. There, there's, it's eye-opening. So, uh, it's very good. You get some good intel, and certainly I can bring that back and, and talk to the board and work on solutions to some of the problems. So we'll keep doing that. Okay? That's all I've got. So that's, uh, concludes the reports.
Make a motion to accept the foregoing reports.
Second up motion, Supervisor Khan with the motion, Supervisor Newman with the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. No correspondence?
No correspondence.
Zippo? Okay. Uh, new business? We just have two items. Dan?
There's a possible approval of ordinance four oh three updating the earned income tax to conform with the local enabling Act thirty-two of Indiana. If you remember, this was advertised a conjunction with all the ordinances on our list last month, but it needed the additional time for the advertising, and it's why it wasn't able to be approved this evening.
I'll make a motion to, excuse me, approve ordinance four oh three updating the earned income tax to conform with, with local enabling Act thirty-two of Indiana.
Second. Supervisor Khan with the motion, Supervisor Jorgensen with the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And I should add, that's the last ordinance update that I need before we complete our ordinance reclassification. So hopefully I'll have something on that for you in a nice couple of minutes.
All right. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, the next item then is the possible ward of the Town Hall Community Center Roof Project. You have a copy of the bids before you. Dan, would you like to cover that?
Certainly. Um, I think.
I think the greatest attribute as to whether you need it or not is when Jeff gives me a call and says, it's dripping through the community center. So obviously, there's a need. So based on the foregoing, Dan asked me to take a look at the CoStar's bids and see whether we could save some money, we cannot, they're already at CoStar levels. So based on the foregoing, we would recommend awarding the Community Center, the Township Community Center Roof Replacement Project to SN Industries in the amount of $138,500.
We have a motion from Supervisor Collin, and a second?
Second that.
Second from Supervisor Jorgensen, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
You see how tight those two bids were? 290 dollar difference between the low bidder and the next bidder. That's very good, thank you.
All right, Paul, can we get a motion adjourned? Supervisor Collin with the motion, Supervisor Jorgensen with the second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned.